Seconded by councillor Grimaud, all those in favor, carry then, thank you. Let's go on to announcements, I'd like to inform individuals, I consulted with Mr. Francis Drouin this morning, and I asked him to obtain information with regard to the fish that's dying off on the, in the Utawa River. This is a source of drinking water for us, it seems that people are dragging their feet as to why fish are dying in the Utawa River. Drinking water is tested at the water treatment, the water treatment plant verifies for the acidic content, but it doesn't perform a particular study as to the exact components of everything that's contained in the drinking water. As I told Monsieur Drouin, it seems to be some pollution from the Quebec side, from the Liévere River, that might be possible contaminant of our, in our area. If anybody has come up with any answers as to why fish are dying in the Utawa River, close to our fair town, please contact us. If somebody have any questions or comments, by the way, this is a question period now, a comment period, you have three minutes allowed to you. Three minutes, Bennoy, and no more than three minutes, it's very difficult for me to restrain my comments to three minutes. I'd like to thank members of council for allowing me to speak to council. My name is Marineuil Lancy, and I'm here to represent the female leadership here in Prescott-Russell. Tonight there will be a motion that will be put forward, put forwarded to include more women in the political process, to increase the number of women in the municipal political process. As you were able to readily notice in the documents that were forwarded to you, there are three major initiatives that are part and parcel of this great project that we're all involved in. We're working along with female councillors in every municipality, such as councillor Chouignard, councillor Leblanc-Casselman, as well as councillor Titlay in Champlain Township, as well as Suzanne LaFrance in Alfred-Planta Genet. And we're trying to set up a committee here that will implement the... We're continuing to, we were told that there will be financing available to us to implement some facets of this great project, financing that might be available until the end of August, or by the end of August should I say. If you have any questions with regards to this project I'm alluding to, I'm available to answer any and all queries you might have, but we're trying right now to quickly implement this project that will be brought to the United Counties of Prescott-Russell's attention so that it might support us in our request for financial support. And we would like to include other partners in our project, though from a financial standpoint, of course, it doesn't compel any municipality to give us any money, or any municipalities to give us any money, but it stands to reason that we'll ask the United Counties of Prescott-Russell for some financial help, for support, to implement this great project, and we're going to ask also Mrs. Chouignard to be our representative for the city of Clarence and Rockland that will sit on deliberations of this particular committee. Are you in agreement with this, Mrs. Chouignard? Yes, I am. Any questions then? Well, you did a great job, by the way, thank you very much, you held to your time limit, thank you very much, Marineuil. Great project, and good luck to you. All right? That's fine then.
Two years ago, our street was repainted, as well as about 80% of the culverts were all replaced. Unfortunately, Leblanc was not replaced, as well as my neighbors. I'm not asking for much, I'm asking for the replacement cost of the culvert only. I paid for the work, I'll pay for anything else that I've already paid for, what I'm asking for is the cost of the culvert. It should have been done at the time, what I was told was, yep, all the culverts are being replaced. Looking like, when I come home from work, my lane was cut, no problem, so, it's going to be replaced. Well, it wasn't replaced, all they did was repaint it, over it. But they should have realized then, it was when they repainted it, they left a big gap where the water just sat over it, and it was a soft. My being soft means, let's just pass these up if you don't mind, I'll show you exactly what the culvert looked like.
Monsieur Cormier, do we know why it wasn't replaced?
During the culvert replacement program and the repairing program, I'm on Marquette Street, the gentleman's, uh, culvert wasn't able to be inspected due to the type of infrastructure they had in front of their house, so, the gentleman has the entire front end of the property leveled out with a culvert spanning the entire length of the property.
For the length of my property, it's all filled in. There is room for instruction, on each end of the driveway, there is a cleanout hole, it's a manhole, that I was instructed that I must put in, so the city shouldn't inspect it. That was done.
Are you asking for just the part of the entrance?
I'm just asking to cover the cost of one part.
Just at the entrance?
Just at the entrance, that's all I'm asking. It cost me over $2,000 to do the front, what I feel should have been done for myself and my neighbor at the exact same time. I understand you've implemented a new policy, but a precedent was set, and they should have done the work at the time that they were doing everybody else's. When I did approach somebody else, and he said, "Well, it's too late, the contract is closed because of the different laneway." So, I figured, okay, so I'm gonna repaint my driveway, my neighbor repaid his, we both looked at the culvert, we dug down, as you can see from the photos, that just doesn't happen in two years, that's been, that's been long overdue. So, I'm just asking for the cost of the culvert, nothing else, I don't expect anything else.
What was the cost?
I believe you have that...
It's $400.
$400, each. It's for each, my neighbor and myself, we spent a lot of time and a lot of money doing it. It should have been done, and it wasn't. My bad for not raising enough standing. So, all I'm asking now, sir, is just basically to cover the cost, and that's it.
Questions?
I honestly think the full cost should be covered, I don't think that the other neighbors actually should have gotten a free ride on this one, and he gets to pay a portion of it just because the city actually didn't do that. I understand there were, basically, I'm saying I'm fine with the $400 each, but they, as residents, already paid through their taxes to get this kind of stuff done, I don't think that it's fair that everybody else got it done and they would have to pay a portion. So, I'm in favor of reimbursing the full cost.
During that process, all the other people on that street, everything was replaced, afraid of trouble.
There was also a couple of locations, and I could pass those around, where the end of the driveway was covered, but one side was accessible, and both my manholes are literally accessible. I was instructed to do it then, we had to have a permit to put the pipes in, we applied, it couldn't get passed, and again, on this one, I had to have a permit, it all passed, so it's just...
So, Mr. Mayor, I think all materials should be reimbursed, not only the culvert, but at least all material. I mean, the labor, I mean, much for that.
The labor is the labor, all I'm asking for, if you'd be gracious enough to cover everything, great, let the labor, $1,000 extra, $1,500, we'll take care of that, no problem. It's just...
You can finish your point.
No, I'm done.
You're good, okay.
I'm just hoping that you'll receive my word, that's all.
Yeah, and I get your situation, because I ran into the same situation with a similar last year, I think it was, and it's, and the reason why we changed that policy is that if, in your case, I think what the director is saying is that it wasn't accessible for there, through the regulation we have in place, that we put into place, I think it was two years ago, it's, if the elevation is not changed when they're doing the work, that's when they don't change it, unless they can find that the culvert is completely collapsed. And that was the argument I made last year with a similar situation as yours, but, so if we do this for you and your neighbor, then we have to do it for everybody else. If we, if we are, if you run into situations where you're changing 80% of the culverts while you're changing the culverts... He falls under the same program that has now expired, but he's grandfathered into that program.
There's no such thing as a grandfathered-in program for those things.
Yeah, absolutely, have you seen, have you seen the pictures of what the...
No, I'm not saying the culvert's not, it wasn't done.
No, it's, the situation's completely different, this is when the entire road was reconstructed, okay, so they're saying, they did everything on there, and the only reason, when I asked Mr. Landhart in the first place as to why it wasn't replaced for those two, is that we couldn't inspect it, when in fact, the question is, well, why couldn't it not be inspected? Because everything was filled in properly, everything was there, but it wasn't inspected, so that's the reason that was given. It should have been inspected, it wasn't inspected, and now the owners are set on the hook for what's something that we didn't do when we should have done it then. So, I mean, I went with what Mr. Goyet said, I mean, at the minimum, I just want to be reimbursed, but obviously, to me, it's something we should have done then for both of those neighbors, and I'm in for the whole cost as well too, obviously.
And at time of inspection, there was no drainage problems, so the administration took the position of not removing it, because we'd have to remove the entire front end of the lot, so, I understand.
No, sir, you wouldn't have, because I have, there is clips on each, each end, $30 a clip, I would gladly pay for, I was not even asked, I was, I was assuming that it would be repainted and replaced, like I'm not in the hospital, and my bad for the soup, I will pay that.
Shouldn't assume.
That's right.
You know, I'm on a soup again.
Yes, sir. And I'm glad I'm here now, that's all.
So, we've got here two culverts.
Two culverts, we're dark men.
The work is already done, everything has been fixed and everything, I think this is an easy recourse to...
Okay, let me put it real, who's in favor?
That's part of my challenge, it's just a question.
We've got it tonight, do one, I just tried, go a little faster, okay? Wait.
At first, why didn't they cut your asphalt?
They said they were replacing the culverts and redoing the road, okay, great, they cut my lane by probably six feet now, or eight feet, so I was under the impression, if they cut it, it would have taken them a half an hour, an hour, probably five minutes to find out how bad it was by digging up the ground.
But they at least paid for the pavement, I hope.
It's all, I've done, everything is done, the road is paved, everything is good, except there's still water hanging up at the other end.
Where is this man?
So, the municipality paid to your entrance, though you didn't, right?
Yeah, but you...
Paid, but with that debt.
Yeah, and...
And then he had to repay it.
The contractor was not a very good finisher, let's say.
We did that contract, Monsieur, do we know?
I don't recall, it's been a few years ago.
I know who did the payment, J.R.L.
Oh, okay.
No, I think he's not the one who replaced the culvert.
No, 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 I think we all got the job here.
Okay, much appreciated.
Thank you very much, sir. Mr. Cormier, so, is there any other questions?
No, yeah. Good evening. My name is Gary Bowles, and I'm part, in parcel of a conflict that's been lasting for quite a while now, along with a neighbor. We have a shared driveway, and I've had a problem with the neighbor, the reason why I'm here is that I want to have fair access to my yard, there's, it's a two-story building, and we have a lot of problems between myself and my neighbor, and it's very difficult for me to deal with this particular situation. I would like to have maybe a minor variance approved. Well, we're talking about bringing a minor variance, variation, or should I say, we're talking about a minor variance modification here, are we not? Yes, because this instrument, to have easy access to the driveway...
Mr. Mayor, in the fence bylaw, which is where the height of the hedges is becoming an issue for these two neighbors, there is the authority within that bylaw for council to grant an exemption to a height requirement for that hedge, so it's really council's discretion if they want to do that, there's hedges throughout that neighborhood, I've seen pictures of this hedge, I think it could be well-maintained in those sites, but we're looking for council's direction if they're so inclined.
Well, I just want things, this things to stop, really. Of course, I would like to the matter resolved. Is there a request that the hedge that is a cause, a root problem, be cut?
So, Mr. Mayor, the, this is an ongoing dispute between the parties in regards to a shared hedge that sits on the property line, the hedge height sits at about, about 15 feet now, give or take, which is well above the height that it's allowed to be under the fence bylaw, a hedge, under our fence bylaw, a hedge is considered a fence, so this, this hedge is considered a fence and sits on the property line, which would require, if we're gonna adhere to the letter of the fence bylaw, would require it to be significantly cut down roughly in half, it would probably kill the hedge. The neighbor that originally called with the complaint was asking for two feet to be cut off the top of that hedge, that's still not compliant with the bylaw, so I can't say yes, go ahead, and so, our suggestion was that the occupants, if they wanted to, could come forward to council and ask for exemption, and council could consider whether or not they're willing to do that.
Why did we include hedges, because hedges, it's like natural, it's like having trees between properties, it's something that is nice, it's not like, it's not as...
That being a well-maintained, because it actually embellishes all of your...
That's right.
And I didn't maintain it for him, for free, because he hasn't been cutting it for the last four years, but he had, for, because he's been living there, he's been living there for 14 years.
Could we make a request to modify the bylaw? A cedar hedge is, when it's nicely trimmed, is nice, but it's not kept up.
We could be running, no problem, we've got more cedars somewhere else too, so, but we could, sure, who is, a real bush person right there, come from cedar to cedar.
Probably 60% of the cedars that are on the bylaw, if you like, if you're following the rule.
I think the best thing would probably be to ask for an exception for this place, and see where that goes. I'm not sure. Monsieur, have you got any other suggestion, Mr. Wilson, or Mr. Goyet?
My, my suggestion in this particular matter would be if council was willing to consider exemption to set a height limit on it, and require it be well-maintained if it's going to exceed the height limitations of the fence bylaw, and allow other residents that want to come forward with an exemption request, as, as we do with other bylaws, they can come forward to council and make their pitch to council.
What height would you consider would be, in this case, for example, what the height be, that would be acceptable?
I think you'd have to consider how high the branches are, because if you cut at the bottom, you're gonna have just dirty old branches, that's all you're gonna have.
Have the elevation too, right? I mean, some, some of us are all like needles, it just makes it seem so much higher, I mean, this is, this is like, I don't, it's...
She was that?
A hedge, in my opinion, should be double the height of the fence, so, if that's this, six feet, then a hedge could be 12, I mean, it's a tree, I mean, 12.
Or if it becomes a tree, or if it becomes a tree...
But if it's 12, 12 feet, I think you're okay, that's just hair, you're soil, I mean, it's just anything good, I mean, it drinks the water, it absorbs, it's... The problem I have with this whole thing is that, you know, it's like saying, well, everybody's driving 120 kilometers an hour now, so instead of having a 80-kilometer-hour zone, we should have a 120-kilometer, just because the fence has been growing and not being maintained, that's the problem I have, is that we're gonna have a slew of residents coming in, into your department, first, to get a consultation, and then here, to get exceptions to everything, so now the exception, the exception becomes the rule, and then what happens? Because right now, if you're maintaining it, that's fine, but you move, and somebody else buys your place, and he decides not to maintain it, he still has the exemption on his property. So, you know, there's a reason why we set seven foot, there must have been a reason why we set seven feet, it may be not the appropriate height, but there's a reason why we did that, so I think, before we throw heights around, we should really think about this.
I think like Mr. Wilson says, we should, I mean, it should be a case-by-case, I mean, that's the way we should work right now, because there's so many heights, height difference everywhere in the city.
Well, I don't mind, well, I understand your point, I don't like the analogy, I think it's dangerous to drive 120 in an 80s, a move versus a tree, but...
No, but it's, I understand the point, but I don't like the analogy, but, the point I have to say is, I agree with the councillors' hat that, you know, 12 feet is double the fence height that we have, the resident on the other side asked for it to be cut by two feet, we said we're at 15 feet, so if the exemption in this case, that you make specific, that we would agree to have it set at 12 feet and maintained at 12 feet, I think it's a, it's a fair exemption, in this case, would seem to me, what the person who was, laid the complaint, I think the resident would also agree, I'm assuming that 12 feet would, would work for you, ish. If Mr. Wilson has his tape measure, you know, it could be different things.
But if you do that for this, then you have to refer every cedar hedge.
Well, if it's a problem in other places, we'll look at it.
I don't understand why we see it different than the tree, if there's a tree between two properties, would you set a height? No, and some edges, even though they go high, they still look okay, as long as they're all the same, as long as it doesn't impure into the neighbors, I don't, I don't assume why we, everything needs to be exactly cut and trimmed, and, you know, I mean, they are trees.
Well, I've seen, I've got a hell of a lot of trees to cut and plant, I think, Mr. Wilson.
Mr. Mayor, just for council's information, there are a lot of hedges throughout our municipality that exceed the height requirements of the fence bylaw, we simply do not have the capacity to go measure every hedge, so we tend to deal with the ones that are brought to our attention, as is the case with this particular hedge. If I'm hearing council's discussion, we would certainly be more than happy as a department to do a little bit of digging and see if we could bring back a recommendation that does resolve this particular hedge, which if council was willing to consider an exemption, at least, folks, then it resolves their issue, we can certainly look at bringing something back within these couple of hours.
I don't think it's everybody that minds the trees being 15 feet high, a lot of people enjoy that, so, yes, I'm going.
If Mr. Goyet, we're just, like, and then we will bring the report back, okay, that will look at heights, I believe, two years ago, we did have a situation with the county of Remarque Board, where we insisted that the hedge was reduced to seven.
There was a, yeah, and that, there was a safety issue, it's just, I guess we're here because more of a neighbor's dispute, and we have to find the middle ground, we thank you for your patience, but there's another neighbor I'm sure that we have to maybe listen to, and there's, so, it's unfortunate, but I hear...
We've got a few emails, so, we don't, we have a good idea, it's over.
Yeah, thank you for answering. Yeah, well, just to bring a little car, something that's aligned with the speed limit thing, if you're to apply a speed limit only to one person, just because you drive a scooter and not a car, then it's not fair. We're taking this for granted. We understand, we'll see.
Item 9.1, council members' items, resolve, council mandate administration to review the policies and bylaws concerning, concerning containers, to take a look at possibilities of placing them in commercial zones as long as they are installed at a discreet distance, and that all measures be implemented to prevent visual pollution. Seconded by councillor Bouchard. Are we talking about private containers and not those municipal containers, or those, well, all containers? The city of Clarence and Rockland already has containers in place in some of those areas, what I'm trying to understand is that the town-owned containers are subject to a slow but sure elimination process, but I believe that we're dealing here with private containers, not those containers that fall under the aegis of the town's control. I just want to make sure that they're placed at a fair distance, yes, they be placed at a fair distance from existing buildings, and that they be surrounded by a fence, or maybe a cedar hedge, well, that might work also, Mr. Mayor, but I suggest also that these containers be placed in a discreet area, and that they might be fenced around, or a hedge placed around it, so that it might not be, be able to be spotted from the, from the road. Mr. Drouin might be called upon to look into this, he's a specialist apparently, in, in all of this. So, all those in favor then? Carry it. Let's go on now to a 9, 9.2, members' resolution, presented by councillor Don Bouchard, I believe, regarding culverts on Marquette Street. Monsieur Bouchard, go ahead.
As the chief major work was completed on Marquette Street, whereas most culvert belonging to residents were replaced during this project, except those for residents of four and five Marquette Street, it resulted that council authorized the cost of the culvert to be reimbursed, more specifically on the amount of $400 to Danielle and Brent Goyet, resident of four Marquette Street, and the amount of $400 to Yekidze, residence of six Marquette Street. Okay, so there's a six out of five, it's not five, it's six.
Okay, we know two residents, so...
Seconded by councillor Zandt. Well, I'd like to propose an amendment, if you'll allow me to do so, yes?
First, Mr. Landhart right now, and he kinda has a little bit more of a historic on this.
I think you can understand, Mr. Cormier, that even if the administration's position is that it cannot be inspected, or could not be inspected, the fact that they started to cut in the yard, you know, gives us the intention to replace it, it has to be in English, because of the proponents that are involved, they're English-speaking.
Even though someone says that it wasn't going to be done, the fact that the driver was cut up meant there was intent to replace, maybe some wires got crossed and some communication as far as where it had to go, but having looked at the picture of what the culvert looked like, clearly, it had to be replaced. I personally, like I said earlier, don't think that it's fair that everyone else got it done for free, and then they would have to pay, I think they're very kind to say that they're going to incur some costs, but I would like to pay, or to propose to pay for the full amounts of the reconstructions, as the other ones on the street received.
What was the cost, sir?
Around $2,000, but all I'm asking for is basically, it was close to $600 with the, the couplers, delivery, and the, that one culvert, I don't have great, but I don't know if that's a different precedent that we set up.
Well, I don't think it's a precedent, considering we did it for everybody else, but you know what, if, if the, if the ratepayer is okay with that cost, then that's fine, I'm not gonna argue and try to up it, I just don't think that it's fair that everybody else got it for free, and these two had to pay.
At $600, you would be happy with that?
Yeah.
Okay, so let's propose $600, gentlemen. Okay, so let's propose six hundred dollars.
Seven hundred dollars.
Okay.
I respect that maybe a fair bit of time has gone by on this particular issue, but if we deposit, if you have an invoice?
Uh, the, the invoice?
Yeah, the invoice, well, Eric has the invoice, there was the culvert on there, but there's probably the other cost, we're probably all, I don't know what that's...
Did you have the culverts, everything were on there?
Everything was on there as well. Okay, so my Nick actually already has, sorry, the clerk already has the...
I'm not sure it adds up to six hundred dollars, though?
I'm not sure.
Well, just put six hundred for cost of material and, and...
Up two, up two.
Confirmation, or whatever.
I think a little bit more than six hundred, but it's close.
Last one, six hundred each, then. Okay, everybody in favor?
Yes.
I see.
Thank you, then. Let's go on now to item nine point three. Resolution to change the August nineteen, two thousand and nineteen regular council and committee of the hall meetings date for August the twenty first, two thousand and nineteen. Mostly because of the fact that we're called upon to attend the AMO annual conference, so we're trying to push this date forward to about two days, for about two days. We have two presentations on deck with regard to infrastructure and environment right now, or natural resources, or something, or a, something or other. We're waiting for another presentation to be fine-tuned with regards to transportation. If things go well, we'll be attending three presentations. We know we'll be attending a presentation given to us on a Monday morning. All those in favor? Who's seconding this particular motion? Seconded by Councilor Joignan, it was moved by Councilor Zant initially. All those in favor? Carry it. You seconded this motion, by the way, Mrs. Joignan. Now, let's go on to my resolution, item nine point four. Yes, could you please read it? Whereas, the Canadian Federation of Municipalities has just launched an appeal to municipalities to request for grant money for projects that would incite women to take part in the political municipal process, and that the Female Leadership Prescott Russell Association has implemented a project to increase representation of women in municipal councils, the presence of women in municipal councils, that will have all female, or any female elected official to take part in this process. And that we approach the United Counties to also shoulder this particular project. And whereas, Zian Joignan, female council, municipal councillor, is ready to implement this project and to sit on the committee, be it resolved that the city of Clarence Rockland nominate, or appoint Zian Joignan to represent the city of Clarence Rockland, and to sit at the meetings of this particular group, and to support also their request of this particular group to take part in demonstrations, to further this movement, and a copy of this resolution be forwarded to the leadership movement of Prescott Russell. Seconded by Councilor Cadrelli, I believe. Questions? All those in favor? Carry it, then. Thank you. Let's go on now to consent items. Are there any items that you would wish to withdraw from the irregular order of consent items? It seems to me that, Mr. Laval, that your name is right beside the consent items heading to read all of those. Be it resolved that the following items, as identified under consent items, appearing on the agenda of the regular meeting of the seventh of August, be adopted. Ten point one, adoption of the minutes of the following meetings. Regular meeting, June seventeenth, two thousand and nineteen, committee of the hall. June the seventeenth, two thousand and nineteen, special meeting. June the twenty fifth, two thousand and nineteen. Item ten point two, receipt of the minutes of the following meetings. Library board meeting, May fourteenth, two thousand and nineteen. Committee of adjustment, May eighth, two thousand and nineteen. And committee of adjustment, May twenty eighth, two thousand and nineteen. Item ten point three, resolution to acknowledge the receipt of the two thousand and eighteen Heritage Advisory Committee annual report. Ten point four, resolution to hire a taxation analyst-collector. And ten point five, resolution to hire full-time operator laborers. Seconded by Councilor Simar. All those in favor? Thank you, then. Item eleven point one, Mr. Bouchard. It's a resolution to authorize the Optimist Club unilingual francophone permanent ground Yes? So you want me to read this? I don't want to read this resolution in English, of course. Be it resolved that municipal council authorizes the installation of a unilingual francophone permanent ground sign on municipal property within the right-of-way of Caron Street in Rockland for the announcement of the Rockland Optimist Club events. And that municipal council approves a request for an exemption to their requirement to pay the application fees for the Rockland Optimist Club for their sign permit and sign variance applications for a total amount of three hundred and thirty-three dollars. Seconded by Councilor Cadrelli. Did we not ask that at least anglophone contents be put on this signage? No, but we've had meetings with the representatives of the Optimist Club, and I believe they were called upon to go back there and look into this further. I was a bit surprised that this came before council tonight, maybe there was something that occurred in the meantime. I believe we should table this and defer it, because, for further consideration, because I believe we were afraid of getting into precedents here. Well, you see, the first letter that we received from Mr. Plant of the, of the Optimist Club did state that the logo, the sign would be visible on both sides, one side in English and the other side in French. But now we're dealing with a unilingual sign here. The bylaw requests that all signs within our jurisdiction be bilingual. Well, I believe that we, the consultation process that we entered into with the principals involved led to fruitful discussions. The Daughters of Isabel also would have the same intent. But it would also allow other organizations to, to advertise their particular activities. But we didn't have any feedback as to that, or comeback as to that, no. But we can't ask an organization to invest in a sign to promote activities of other organizations. But the Daughters of Isabel also were alluding to a bilingual signage. Well, the fact that the Optimist Club is a francophone organization, well, it's not a francophone organization. The Optimist International is American, is America-based, USA-based, and is anglophone. But I believe that here in Rockland, all activities are conducted in French. They didn't want to relay the message that they were anglophone. People attending Optimist-sponsored activities expect that they be francophone activities. We'd ask that Optimist International at least be put up at the top of the sign. So at least we'd have a bit of English of this sign. I'm not all that aware of the discussions that were had in the past, but there's a motion here to defer this to further consideration? Fine. Good evening, ladies. Good evening. Good evening, Mr. Mayor. The next resolution deals with the request to the Minister of Municipal Housing, of Municipal Affairs and Housing. Whereas, the municipality of Clarence Rockland recently experienced a severe flooding event on April the twenty sixth, two thousand and nineteen, and experienced incremental operating and capital costs. Be it resolved that the council of the city of Clarence Rockland hereby requests the Minister of Municipal Affairs and Housing to activate the municipal disaster recovery assistance program. And be it further resolved that Frédéric Dinwaye, treasurer, be and is hereby delegated with the authority to verify and attest to the accuracy of the financial claim to be submitted. Seconded by Councilor Zant. Any questions? All those in favor? Carry it, then. Thank you. Item twelve point one, bylaws. Are there any bylaws you'd like to withdraw from, Mr. Grima? None? Be it resolved that the following bylaws be adopted. Twelve point one, two thousand and nineteen dash sixty-two, assumption of Sharon Street left you led subdivision. Two thousand and nineteen dash seventy-five, to authorize the signature of a UCPR agreement regarding the roads transfer fund. Two thousand and nineteen dash seventy-six, to appoint Jacob Chinyer as municipal law enforcement officer. Two thousand and nineteen dash eighty, lifting of point thirty meter reserve block twenty-two, Plan fifty M dash two ninety-nine. And bylaw two thousand and nineteen dash eighty-two, to authorize the director of community services to sign agreements with the United Counties of Prescott Russell for the purpose of daycare salary enhancements. Seconded by Councilor Bouchard. All those in favor? Carry it, then. Confirmatory bylaw? Be it resolved that bylaw two thousand and nineteen dash seventy-nine be deemed a confirmatory bylaw for the regular meeting of town council held on the seventh of August, two thousand and nineteen. Seconded by Councilor Bouchard. All those in favor? Carry it. Adjournment called at seven forty-seven, so we'll take a break, and we'll come back at eight P.M. for the committee of the hall meeting. Thank you.